Okay, so we'll be back up around this. Oh, yeah. We had a few of the Kelly's stuff and let them can't. Candy is probably. Yeah, that's like an hour and a half. Kelly's a good one, too. About an hour and a half. As David Dan Mitchell came, one of them.
Sound different.
It's a lot of. Well, I've been doing it since 2002.
Well, it's gotta be okay.
Weird can. Dr. Pepper Cherry. Three cans of Dr. Pepper. But there's also a Dr. Pepper.
Cherry's good.
Yeah, I don't mind it.
Oh, well, get ready for the thing to start.
All right, I have about two minutes before nine o'clock. Nearly five on the wall. We had a couple. Powerful elements on Tuesday.
So Ross, you're gonna run with one of the two extra select votes?
I don't think.
When will that come about?
Next year. The approval is this year. Then we get at the next election. I certainly hope so. Or it'd make life a lot easier. Or it does make life a lot easier.
All right, that's nine o'clock. And I can either use this microphone or not. All right, one, one request, I guess, of people who. Have their Wi-Fi on, who can shut that off. Apparently, they have lessons in streaming. For those who I didn't know it was live streaming, but this it is. So you'd consider turning off. Right, so good morning, everyone. My pleasure to call the 2023 Croydon Town Six. Votes that were cast today. Today's session of the town of Croydon. One simply states that the town officials were elected. That that happened on Tuesday, so we will not be. Number one, I've read that on Tuesday. How this will work, I know many of you have been here before. There are some people that are new, but I will read. The warrant is. Well, all right, sorry, I also have this for this afternoon for the school session, too. After I read the article, I'll ask for a motion and a second. And discussion will follow, assuming there is a motion and a second. After the article is moved and seconded, that discussion will take place. The article may be amended by a motion and a second. If there's an amendment, there will be more discussion on the amendment. At the end of that discussion on the amendment, there'll be a vote. We will then return to the original article or the article as amended. There will then be more discussion and be more discussion on the article as it exists at that time. We're going to be guided by moderator's rules of order and procedure, which have been distributed, they're up there, they've been posted around town at various websites. Hopefully, everybody's read them and understands it. That will help, I think, make this move. Meeting go a little more smoothly. And I want to thank April Anderson, who printed up a number of additional rules. So hopefully, everybody would have them for this morning. So. So please be courteous to everybody. But only that person will be recognized by the moderator may speak at that time. And there is a little known statute that somebody. And if enough of you speak out of turn, we can lower the tax rate for next year. Those wishing to address the body should approach the microphone, which is. Which is right here. All right, I guess we're gonna move this microphone down onto the floor. Okay, all right.
Why don't you just grab the tall stand and sit that one on the stand?
Still a few minutes, of course. Scratch it over.
Sure you know how to work that? I have an idea.
So you approach the microphone with your voting card visible, so we will know that you are a registered voter. When you're recognized, please speak clearly and state your name. I'm not gonna ask for an address. Other than, just make sure you live in Croydon. And if you wish to make an amendment. And present that amendment in writing, if you have to do that before. Prior to the vote. Everybody has a voting ID card, which you receive when you came in. If there is a hand vote, everybody needs to raise that card up over their head. We'll have people counting those. It may be that we can just do it with a voice vote, which obviously will a lot quicker. If somebody, if there's a secret ballot is called for by at least five voters, which has to be in writing, which is a little secret ballot, please hold on to it. And when you leave this meeting, please turn that card into the check-in table. To avoid the possibility of you leaving the meeting before it ends. And some people come here for just one article or two articles, and that's out. So to prevent there from being action taken after you leave and you find out that somebody filed, excuse me, asked for a motion to reconsider. I would suggest that someone make a motion to restrict reconsideration after the voters have particular article. And before the next article is presented. It's up to you whether somebody wants to make that motion or not. If you don't make that motion and you leave, somebody can later on. Now, we had, I know this happened a long time ago in Newport at like 12:30 in the morning. Everybody was gone, somebody might filed, excuse me, asked for a reconsideration of something that passed at eight o'clock in the evening. It got reversed, and obviously people were upset.
Midnight Harry.
What's that?
Midnight Harry's family.
That's exactly what it was. So I trust that everybody has a copy of the warrant. Warrant serves as our agenda. The only issues directly related to the article can discuss and be addressed here today. We will now begin with Article Two. And actually, before we do that, I want to introduce the head table. We have Chairman Russ Edwards, the Select Board. Anyway, you might be listening. You won't have to lift up your voter card. Joe Marco. Sitting up here. On the stage with me is Paul Freitas, our new deputy. Excuse me, our new town clerk, tax collector. There's probably a tell difference between him and our deputy, Kristen Kim. All right, Article Two. See if the town will vote and raise and appropriate the sum of $433,000 for the repaving of Cash Street. And to authorize the issuance of not more than $433,000 of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA 33, and to authorize the municipal officials to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and further to raise and appropriate the sum of $54,051 for the first year's bond payment. This is recommended by the Select Board. And I believe this requires a sixty percent vote. This is more than a hundred thousand.
Mr. Moderator, I move the question. I make a motion to move the question. Can you hear me now?
Mr. Rising is here.
Mr. Moderator, I make the motion to move Article Two as it is written in the warrant book.
I second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there somebody who wants to explain Article Two?
This is the same situation as we had two years ago with the paving of Leverett Hill, where we got a quote, or actually, we had a number of quotes. We chose the lesser dollar value. And then we decided to put in for a loan to pay it off over 10 years, which keeps our tax rate much more flat. It doesn't boost it up one year and it drops the next. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, any discussion? You want to come up to the microphone, give us your name. You know, everybody knows you. It may not be the case.
Dominic DiMaggio. I'd like to make a motion to table Article Two until after we have the regular town monies.
So you want to take it out of order, basically?
Take it out of order and move it after the.
Is there a second? So who's seconded, we need to. Right, just make sure we want to, we're taking minutes off, so we need names to make sure, you know, who made the motion and who's seconded. So Brenda Williams, seconded one. All right, discussion on whether to table this to a later time in the meeting. All right, no discussion? Then we will call, I'll call for the vote. So all those in favor of tabling or postponing Article Two to later in the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Right, the noes or nays appear to have it. The motion is denied. Feel like I'm recording? All right, so we'll continue on with Article Two then. Any other?
Ian Underwood. This is, there's a lot of discussion every time we get together like this about speeding on Cash Street. It seems like paving it will just make it easier to speed. So it might be better if we just left it unpaved or did something else that made it harder to drive past on.
Yes.
Good morning, Hope Damon, Old Springfield Road.
All right, keep the noise down.
I'm in favor of this article. Cash Street is a mess. I actually agree with Ian that there is risk that people will drive faster, and I would love for there to be a couple of speed bumps put in there that are designed for the road as opposed to potholes that. It's the primary road in this town. Thank you.
Yes.
Has anybody looked into possibly grinding the tile that's there? Putting it down, I mean, that's a flat area. You don't have a lot of water running off there. So you already have material there, you grind it, you pack it in. Those regrinds hold up really well. And Cash Street, for the most part, is taking care of it anyway. I would think that would be a lot cheaper.
Joe, could you give us some advice on that?
Joe, can you come, I know. Sorry. I don't know, Russ.
People actually live on Cash Street. Yeah, Bill Boleo, I think most know me. I'm the asshole that works on the roads. The road has been paved. The people that live on that road on the paved portion, I'm assuming are gonna want it to continue to be paved. There's a dust issue. There's tons of traffic on that road, they're what they used to be. They get a lot of traffic, sunup, new foot, people cut crosslots. I believe the road should be paved. Eventually, the whole road should be paved.
Right, any further discussion? Yes. Come on down.
John Anderson. I live on Fletcher Road, which is also unpaved. And I believe that hopefully, in time, we will pave all of our roads because of our home. So I would like to suggest that we approve this article for the safety of our cash.
My name's Angie Boleo, and I just have a clarifying question. Are we raising $433,000 or are we raising $54,000?
We are raising $433,000, which is the loan, and we have to also authorize the payment for this first year of the four. That's as part of the $433,000. The DRA has to spell this out as part of the warrant. So they understand exactly how much is coming out for the debt service for this first year.
So $433,000 or $54,000 is part of the $433,000? It's not?
Yes.
So the bond would be $433,000.
Okay. Yeah. The bond. People up around, I know you can hear each other, people in the back can't. I'd like to ask, would you go to the microphone, identify yourself, and ask the question?
Don Holmes. And the question was, the $433,000, the bond that we need to take out would be $433,000 less than the $50,000.
No, you take out the total amount for the bond as per the warrant states. The first payment is if you had your amortization listed, and that's this first year's payment, because that gives the town the authority to spend that much this year. We're being authorized to take the loan out, but you won't be spending anything more than the first year's payment this year. Next year, you'll have to be, well, you can put it on a warrant or not. Once a loan is approved by the town, DRA will force you to pay it every year anyway. It's an obligation that's. This is just outlining the exact amount we spend this year. DRA does not accept any warrant that doesn't have a specific dollar.
Again, I'm gonna go with the people who have. Sure.
I couldn't tell if you were looking over me or not. Kim McKinney, I actually live on Cash Street, as most of you know. And I understand the concern about speeders, but I think that is an issue that we would need to deal with if it passes. In other ways, like Coke said, maybe speed bumps. But we need to remember that it's not just vehicles that are traveling on that road. There's bikes and there's wheels. So grinding it up and going back old school, I don't think is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm still Hope Damon. So Russ, I just wanted to, correct me if I'm wrong here. The impact on this year's taxes is the $54,051.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes.
Hello, I'm Brittany. My question is, I'm seeing on here that it's not determined yet the interest charges. Is there going to be a cap of how much interest is going to be that we're gonna, it's gonna be up to seven, eight, 10%? That's a huge increase to what the $433,000 is.
That's why there's this payment of the $54,000. That's based on the interest rate that we have at this time. We are also authorized to attempt to get a lower interest rate.
But not more?
Not more, because we can only spend up to that $54,000 per year, for this year. If things change and we could find an interest rate that would be less, we would be able to refinance the loan and lower the payment. But we would not be able to, I think it's a 4.5% interest rate. We can't go above that, because that would exceed that $54,000 that we'd get if it's approved.
And it's a locked-in rate or?
Yeah, it's locked in.
Okay, because I know with the fluctuating market that things are seven, eight, 10, you know.
The contract hasn't been signed yet, so. Until we get the authorization, that's what we're going with as the best estimate from the bank. If we can get a lower rate, you know, we can switch to a different bank, and then that'll save the town money.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Kathy Pesky, Barton Road. Do we no longer get money from the state? I thought we usually get a check around $30,000 from the state for the roads.
We have gotten money from the state, and we're applying that to a different part of the roads and highways budget. It's one of the articles that's coming up further in the warrants.
Further discussion? Okay. Ladies first. Anybody that wants to have a discussion, you can line up at the microphone. It's up to you.
Hi, Cassie Hoyt, also Cash Street. I have a clarifying question you may have already answered, but I'm trying to make sales, so a little distracted. Is the $433,000, that's just to repay what's already existed paving?
On Cash Street, it's just redoing what's been done on this lower section first.
Okay, and isn't there payment on the other side as well?
There is another section of payment, but that is not covered in this warrant. This is just to do this one continuous stretch from Pine Hill to the end that is now paved.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and again, if somebody, even if they're at the microphone, if somebody here wanna raise your hand or something, or just, I'll let you shout. raise your hand or something, I'll let you shout out Ian here. And you won't get one dollar off mine. Aaron?
Aaron McKee, I drive on Cass Street every once in a while. My question is, what is the life expectancy of the paved job and is that aligned with the payback period of the loan? Just wondering if we're going to end up in a situation where we have sort of compounding loans in the future.
I'm not sure what they consider the actual life of the pavement, but that's contingent upon the amount of attendance to it. Like we've done Pine Hill and we've done Loveren Hill. At a point, probably at about five years down the road, those are going to need some surface coverings and stuff that'll extend their life. They won't be falling apart like they were in the past. If you pave a road, you've still got some responsibility to keep it, you know, treated right. The ditches still have to be cleaned out. The culverts have to be maintained so they don't start breaking down. I'm sure Joe could give you a much further instruction, but it's not just pave it and forget about it. It's an ongoing thing. That's part of what some of the normal budget in the highway department is for.
I understand that. Sorry, Tom. I guess my question is, if it's a 10-year loan, which I think it is?
Yes.
Are we going to have, is it likely that we'll have to repave it before 10 years is up or will it?
Oh, no, you wouldn't repave it. You would simply be doing some maintenance on it at that point. Because, like I said, you may need to do some seals and cracks and stuff. You may need to do some other things that Joe knows better about the process, but it's not a total repayment at 10 years. It doesn't just go and all of a sudden, it's all crap. As long as you do the continuing payments, you'll be able to keep the road in good shape for quite a number of years, past the 10-year mortgage period.
Further discussion? Yes, Don? I make a motion to move the question. Well, as a matter, I didn't see anybody else raise their hand. I mean, we could, you could take a vote on moving the question if you want. I mean, you made a motion and I'm not sure if a second is the motion to call the question. Well, it's a motion on the floor and I guess it's a second. So all those in favor of calling the question, ceasing debate, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, so you're voting on Article 2. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate some of 433,000 for repaving of Cass Street and to authorize issuance of not more than 433,000 dollars in bonds and notes in accordance with provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA 33, and to authorize municipal officials to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and to determine rates of interest thereon and further to raise and appropriate some 54,051 dollars for first year's bond payment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Article 2 passes. Article 3. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 548,859 dollars for general municipal operations. This article does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately. And not hearing any, so I will entertain a motion to adopt, excuse me, to approve the Article 3 to be before the meeting.
Mr. Moderator, I approve Article 3 as written in our town report.
I say.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I approve Article 3 as written in the town report.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Only once.
Hi, sir. Kevin Morris. General question. If all of these articles are to be passed today, what would be the impact on taxes overall?
I have not added them up.
I didn't see you. All right. Article 3. See if the town will raise 548,859 dollars for general municipal operations. This article does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Article 3 passes. We're in between articles, but...
Can I just answer his question? May I just answer his question? That's okay, I don't have to. His question? May I just answer his question? That's okay, I don't have to.
Well, the question was what the effect was.
If all of the articles were passed.
Well, I don't know.
That's okay, go on, go on.
I have kind of a follow-up to Kevin. I don't know how, and I don't want to delay this meeting, but I don't know how we can vote on all of this without knowing what the tax impact is. I've asked the last two years to have it noted on every article what the tax impact is if it did pass, and I would like to make that request again so that we know what we're paying for, how much it's going to cost us.
As a rule of thumb, for every $1,000 you vote to pay, you raise 10 cents on your dollar, on your taxes. Now, the complex process for establishing the tax rate does not include the things from DRA and whatever the select board chooses to work with the DRA to pay.
This is just explanatory. If I can speak, I'm Chris Prost. Well, so page 12 of the booklet shows the budget summary, but the operating budget, special warrant articles, blah, 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 if it would all pass and the amount of taxes to be raised, right, which I guess is an estimate. And then page 23 in the booklet shows tax rate comparison, and like he noted that it doesn't, you know, you can't directly translate this total amount into a tax rate just super easily, but it gives some idea.
Article 4. See if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $12,500 for cemetery maintenance and cemetery repairs. The funds to support this article are to be removed from the interest earned in Henry J. Sawyer Memorial Fund and the Ruber Memorial Fund, recommended by the selector.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to approve, move the Article 4 as written in the town report.
Seconded. All right, somebody I'd like to speak to, Article 4. To explain Article 4.
This is the simple article that we have in our town report every year where the cost of maintaining the town cemeteries comes from funds that were deposited years ago, which they can only use the interest raised. There is sufficient interest to have this much withdrawn to pay for the mowing, trimming, tree branch removal, et cetera.
Discussion? Ready for the question? All those in favor of Article 4, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, it passes. Didn't read it again. I just read it. Article 5. See if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 to be added to the Bridges Capital Reserve Fund previously established, recommended by the selector.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to move Article 5 as written in the town report.
A second.
I just want to make sure that the article that's in the town report accurately reflects the article that's posted. And I know there's, well, actually, there's a typographical error. Coming up is actually in both the town report and in the article that was posted. And I know everybody has, I think, everybody has is really what's in the annual report. I'm reading from the actual article that's been posted. If there's a difference, I don't know what that is. I'm reading one and you're moving possibly a different one.
You're being dirty.
I am, I'm being picky.
No, that's fair to being vague. What's the difference?
The difference is...
Would you like me to explain it?
Well...
Are you talking about Article 11?
Well, yeah, Article, yeah, Article 11 is a typographical error.
Where it's typed out 8,000, but the numbers show 80,000.
Correct, yeah. And so if the, if the article that's posted, was posted correctly and it said 80, but the article in the town warrant said 8, then you're passing the $8,000, not the $80,000.
Article 5 though?
We are, I'm just using that as an example.
I think he's just concerned that whatever he's reading is not what we have here, so...
It may not be.
I think you could just say, as you read it, we can follow out if there's something different, if we see something different.
All right, yes, if you'd like to, Russ, to explain Article 5.
Article 5 is to continue putting the money away for the different bridges to be repaired in the future. A bridge repair is a very expensive project. We've got one on the board for later, for this year, which is the one on Bright Road, which the state has red flagged on us, and we didn't know exactly when they were going to start telling us we had to fix it immediately or when, and we've come up with something that should, you know, save us a substantial amount of money. But no matter what happens, we have five different bridges in this town that require maintenance and at some point, some major repairs. So putting the money away each year is a lot more tolerable than having to scramble and go for a warrant of $200,000 or $300,000 for one bridge, which would major impact the tax value of the town.
Discussion?
I'm sure it's later in the book, but I didn't have a chance to peruse everything. What is the current balance of that Bridges Capital Reserve Fund?
The current Bridge Capital Reserve Fund balance is 157,781.08.
So you'd be bringing us up correctly 180.
Another 125 gets us to about 178.
Further discussion? Yes.
Hi, Jody Underwood. What is the goal? Is there a limit that you're looking to reach?
We want to have at least 200,000 sitting there because that's typically what the cost is to do a full repair on a bridge. We're going to be asking to take some of that out this year. So putting some in is just trying to keep it about where we're at now.
Jody, you have first?
I did, sorry.
Okay, just a reminder, just so I will know that you registered. All right, further discussion? Article 5. Ready for the question? All right, Article 5. See if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 to be added to Bridges Capital Reserve Fund previously established. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article 5 passes. Article 6. See if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 to be added to the town Revaluation Capital Reserve Fund.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to move Article 6 as written in the town report.
Second.
Explanation?
The town of Croydon works very diligently to keep our Avatar. Every five years, we do a full townwide assessment, and that costs a substantial amount. So we put away 5,000 here, and by the time we get our full reevaluation, we have the amount to pay for the assessment.
Yes, hi, Jim Pesky. I realize that this is a normal function of government and it's not a big amount of money and it's probably very likely going to pass, but given that I'm being asked to pay money so that the town can reassess my property to get more money from me, I kind of feel like I'm Alfreda Hamilton buying Aaron Burr a set of Dooley pistols. So it'll probably pass, but I can't vote for it.
How is possible? Same property's going down. Probably not yours. Oh.
Hi, Hope Damon. Russ, or someone, can you tell us what we're legally required to do in terms of frequency of reassessment? Isn't there an RSA that we have to do this at certain intervals?
I'm not sure what that frequency is. This has been a practice that Croydon set up to make it less painful as far as spiking the cost. Because if you, the whole town appraisal is around $25,000, so that's just approximate. We also negotiated with Avatar to, for our five-year regular contract, so we kept that stable as well. Trying to just follow it by the RSA would probably make the tax rate just go up and down.
I would just say I support this article. The total valuation of the properties in town, keeping it current is the best way for us to actually get the most amount of money from the state. Because our reversals from the state are partly based on what our property values are. Because our reversals from the state are partly based on what our property values are.
Further discussion? State your name.
Hi, I'm Aunt Jasper. So I work in the assessing office of another town, and so I can tell you that the New Hampshire Department of Revenue requires all towns in the state to do a full revaluation every five years. Every town is not on the same schedule, but it is mandated for every five years, the full eval.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I am still Kevin. If we have to do a full town evaluation every five years, what is the purpose of doing a partial one every year, as you were saying?
This spreads out the tax implications. It keeps the tax rates much leveller because you're not allowing somebody to be undertaxed for four years and all of a sudden get 10. Part of the town gets checked every year, so we keep increasing those that have made changes of their properties. Instead of waiting for five years and then them perhaps getting a rather substantial increase, they'll get maybe an increase in one or two years that would be a smaller step increase.
Okay. I'm struggling to see the benefit because then if I get evaluated on the second year of the cycle, and I've got three years of paying a little additional, I would rather have five years of paying that lower and then jump up to the whatever. and then jump up to the, whatever the next fire rate is going to be. That's what I would want, at least, I don't know.
All right, further discussion?
So I just wanted to add that every five years, the new assessments don't necessarily increase. I don't know exactly what the criteria is that you, the assessors use, but it's based on market. So there have been years where I've seen decreases in my assessment and increases. So it's always a little behind, but it kind of, market is bad. Like the crash of 2008, values went down. So it doesn't necessarily mean that every five years, the assessments increase. Just...
Ian Underwood. Since the market does go up and down, if you don't assess everybody at the same time, you're assessing people under different conditions. And that actually would seem fair. Because if it's up for two years, people, only certain people are going to be taxed on that basis. So it seems like it would be much fairer to everyone. And I know we're all interested in fairness.
Further discussion? Yes?
While she's coming up. The process of doing this assessment this way has been in the town for a number of years before I even got on the select board. So we were just simply following what has been practiced in the past. I'm not saying that's good or bad. I'm just saying, that's the practice that has been accepted by the town in the past.
Hi, Brittany Egan. I don't know if this was already asked or somewhere I missed, but when was the last five-year assessment? Are we coming up on it soon? Is it going to be in the next year, two years?
Two years. The question was, when was the last town-wide assessment? I believe it was two years ago.
Okay, so anticipated, we, the big assessment would be in another three years, ideally. Okay.
Kim McKinnney, I would just like to make a motion to move the question, please.
Second.
All right, well, I didn't see a whole lot more. All right, those in favor of moving the question or turning off the debate, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, debate ceases. Article 6. See if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 to be added to the Town Revaluation Capital Reserve Fund. Homeless in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Article 6 passes. Article 7. See if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be added to the Town Vehicles and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, established in 2019, recommended by the selector. Motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move to quit Article 7 as written in the town report.
Second.
Jumping to the second. All right, explanation?
Again, this is a case where we're trying to put money in the Capital Reserve Fund a little bit at a time, which helps keep our tax rate, you know, even. And I'll remind you, our tax rate has held the same for two years now. That's, that takes a little effort to do. So with the equipment we have, which is in good shape now, instead of running them all the way down to the, the department works on a five-year replacement program. This year, I don't think we've got anything on the schedule to be replaced. This past year, we were forced to replace the grader, which was an unexpected thing, but we had money in the Capital Reserve Fund to do it. Otherwise, I'm not sure how we would have handled our road, because there's no real good way to have an emergency fund cover things like that.
Discussion?
Kim McKinnney. Does that fund actually cover, say, a police cruiser if we would, to need that in the future?
It covers all town equipment vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Ready for the question? All those in favor of Article 7, to see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be added to the Town Vehicles and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, established in 2019? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it? Seven passes. Article 8. See if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $12,500 to be added to the Town Vehicle and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, established in 2019?
DRA requires, you know, distinct dollar amount put into any capital reserve fund. You can't just vote it in and go from there. It has to be written as the amount. We did not know how much we were going to get for the... Pay for...
Jody Underwood, so, I mean, I would have asked this about the previous time, but it's all connected. I mean, would you have increased the Article 7 amount by $12,500 if you didn't have this also? I mean, I'm not going to say not to do this, but I imagine it's 50 grand a year to keep things going, and now it's 62, right?
As I understood it from the DRA, as we had received this money from a specific purpose that came from the Capital Reserve Fund in the first place, we had to specify the dollar amount separately as they listed it, and had to warrant it that way.
Yeah, not to make the $50,000, $12,500 less.
This money was through the sale of the grader. We just have to, we have to...
I understand what you're asking. We should have had this as the warrant first. Then you could have had the opportunity to reduce the amount on the previous warrant.
Right. That's my question.
I don't, I don't have a good answer of why I put it in the order I did. It was just working to the DRA, and it's a complex process. Play all warrants, so you don't always think of this type of DLA doing it. See if we can do better in the future.
Okay.
Next year.
Yes? Jim Morgan. Capital reserve funds are incredibly important for tax stability. So when you're looking at a dump truck, it's 150 or 200,000 dollars. To have a capital reserve fund, to have a capital reserve fund in a town, it's very important for tax stability over the long generation. When you sell equipment, the money from the equipment sale, because it's greater than, I believe, $5,000 to the RSA, the select board has to put it on the warrant, and the town has to vote on what to do with the money. The most fiscal sense, and the most conservative fiscal sense, is anytime you sell a piece of equipment, that you put the money back into the capital reserve and keep pulling that forward. So I'm very much in favor of this bill.
Further discussion? Let's see, ready for the question? Article 8. See if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $12,500 to be added to the Town Vehicles and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, established in 2019. This amount aimed at the sale of the old? Article 8 passes. Article 9. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 to be added to the Bridges Capital Reserve Fund previously established and specified in Article 8 of the 2020 town report. This sum came from the... Balance, as the funds were deposited from the sale of the Cache Street property, no amount raised by taxation.
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, recommendations required, majority vote. I didn't say we're not recommended by the select one or not.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 8, or Article 9, pardon me, as in the town report.
Explanation?
Last year, the town voted to sell a piece of property on Cache Street, and the warrant also included in it the fact that the money would go into the Capital Reserve Fund. And as for DRA's instruction, you have to write a second warrant to put that money in. And that's the money that came from that sale.